En esuve, en jivon niraallo En esuve, en belan niraallo En esuve, en jivon niraallo En esuve, en belan niraallo Sio ni talayil velicham niraallo Nisa roh magakutu ida kari pi Sio ni talayil velicham niraallo Nisa roh magakutu ida kari pi
Alayriya! Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Naapati mounraam sangeedam, rendu, moundu, naanga vasanagali vasikko
Psalm 43 verses 2, 3 and 4
En aranavey devaneet, yen yenney talibidigiri Satruvinall odukappattu, naan yen dukkathurane teriyaveendu Ummade velichathayum, ummadesatthiyathayum, anipierlu Avaygal yeney naraatti, ummadesasastha paruvathathirku Ummadu vaaasasthalangalukum yenney kondupovadaaga Apothenaan devundey firdangal undeyku Yenaka aanandham aguchaya irkara devinudathirku prevesipen Devane, en devane, ummai swaramanala thaal thudipen
Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Sangidakkaran, inge devaninokki, oru vinnapamaga, intha sangeedathai eradukara
The psalmist is making a request toward God in this psalm
Avunndiyavalvil, palapadigal devanall anumadikappadara
There were many paths which were led by God in his life
Andha padigalil poogumbadudu, avan devaninokki mantraadukara Oru vinnapandhan, intha sangeedamaga, eladappadukara
When he had gone through this path, it is this psalm which he has written when he was going through such afflictions
Silla naakal, avan dukkathoodu tirindha oru kaalam, avanukirindara
There were certain days when he had too leaned in the days of sorrow
Avan dukkathoodu tirindha kaalangal, satruvinall odukappatta kaalangal
There were times when he was afflicted by his enemies and was walking in sorrow
Avanukulleye, kattar namme talibidudharo, namme vittu velagivittaro Endhirana, silla keldvigal eluppappatta oru nairam
In himself itself there was a question which was arising whether the Lord has forsaken or has forgotten him
Appudi vedanayoodu, avan tirindhuundrukumadudu, kattari nokki kerkaran Kathaave, ummadiyavelichathayum, ummadiyasatthiyathayum, yenakaaga anippi arulum
When he was with such pain growing about, he asked the Lord, "O Lord, send out their light and their truth"
Avaygal yeney naraatti, ummadiyaparisutha paruvathathirku ummadesasasthalangalukum yenney kondupovadaaga
"Let them lead me, let them bring me unto the holy hill and to that tabernacle"
Intha satruvinall odukappattu, avan intha vedanayile, thukkathile tirindhuundrukumadudu avundey vaalkey, oru irulaga marivattada
When he was oppressed of the enemy and he was walking in sorrow, his life became a darkness
Priyamanule, dukkam endhavadu, oru irul sulnda oru sulnalay
Sorrow is a darkening situation
Ilavdal, satruvindal thakka padukara, oru sulnalay endhavadu, oru irul sulnda oru nelavaram
Or the attack of the enemy is a situation of darkness
Eppudhu velicham marikarado, appudhu irul kabikkolukarathai, nam bhumiile kaanayiyelum
Whenever light is going down, you can see that the darkness is coming to the earth
Ingay, sangidakkaran, tanudiyavalvil, oru irul sulnda padigal avan kodandhu kadandupovavindiyadaaga irindara
Here we see the psalmist going through the path of darkness
Yoobu gude, oru uttamandhan, anala avunndiyavalkailum, ibripattapadigal anumadikappadadaaga, nam parkamudiyam
Even Job who was an upright person, in his life also such paths were admitted
Anala appripattasulnaligalile, tanakku velicham kettachada, avan chollukara
But in times of like this, he said that he has got light
Yoobu 29, mounray nam parkumbadudu
Reading in Job 29 verse 3
Ah, avar deebum, en talayin mel prakashithada
His candle shined upon my head
Avar aruliyavelichathinaal, naan irulai kadanduboneneenre, yoobu 29, moundla, tanne kurithi chollukara
In Job 29:3, he says, that when by his light I walked through darkness
Andha deebum, andha velicham, avare irulai kadanduboga, avanuk odhivi seethada
That candle, the light, made him to walk through the darkness
Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Idilirundu namme enna velangi kolukara
What to be understood from this?
Kattarinthan naakalile, namakkaga silla karigale anippinadaan, nam intha irulai kadandhesalla iyelum
Only if the Lord is going to send certain things towards us, then we can cross through darkness
Kattara anupavittal, nam untramee cheyeyi yelada
If the Lord does not send, it's not possible with the Lord
Avan yen velichathai kerkaran
Why is he asking for light?
Indekinku gude, manidavalvil, palavidangalile, irul sulnda oru anuvavam andukundeyirukara
Even today in man's life, we can see many darkness surrounding him
Priyamanule, velicham evlugu, pagalukke evlugu nairamo, adu volla irulukkum oru nairamirukara
As much as there is time for the day, even so there is time for night
Ah, indekinku gude, irulile, palar, intha kaalavalile, ningal vandrukareerakai
Even some of you have come in darkness in this place this morning
One ru irul, matru ru irulin adigharam
One is darkness, and the other is authority of darkness
Paavum oru irul
Sinus a darkness
Paam, maranam oru irul
And this is darkness
Ippidi palavidamana irulai kurithi, nam vedatile padikamudiyam
Like this, we can read of many darkness in the word of God
Dukkam oru irul
And sorrow is darkness
Satruvin irul, satruvin porattam oru irul
And oppression of the enemy is a darkness
Ippidi patta palavidamana irulin padigalile, nam poovavindiyirukum
Like this, we have to traverse through the path of darkness
Anala intha irulaya, namudiyavalkayaaga mayumadudu, intha irul, namel adigharamsalaata arambikarada
But when darkness becomes a light, then this darkness becomes to overcome us
Kolosier mudalama adigharam, 13 vasanatim padiparkumbadudu
Colossians 1:13
Irulin adigharatthunindhu, devan namividhalayaaki nar
The Lord has delivered us from the clutches of darkness
Christiana vaalkey endhavadu, irul sulnda vaalkey alla, iludin adigharatthulindhu vidupattae oru vaalkey
Their Christian life is not the life of darkness, but being delivered from the power of darkness
Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Ingay, ivan chollukaraan, andavare, yenakaaga rendu kariyathai anippi arulum
Here, he asked God to send two things
One ru velicham, matru ru satthiyam
One is light, and the other is truth
Avan intha rendu karigaley kerkaran
He asked for two things
Intha rendu kariyathim yenakaaga anupum, avaygal yeney naraattattu
You send off two things for me and let them lead me
Apurudhu, naan ummadiyaparisutha paruvathathukum vandusereve
And then will I come to that holy hill
Aduttadaaga, naan ummadiyavasasthalangalukum vandusereve
And nextly, I will come to that tabernacle
Priyamanule, palakkarigale vedatile, anupumbodiyanakkarigale chollappadukara
Dear beloved, there are many things which are sent to, sent out in the word of God
Ennannakkarigale anippi irindhalum, anala, intha irandu karigalkum maatramp, migundha sakthi undu endhavadi, thaaviidhi sangidakkaran arindhirandha
Whatever he might send, only these two things have more power, this is what the psalmist David had known
Vedatin adipadigale padiparkumbadudu, naan unakkum muntbaga tuudanay anupveen, nengara varthaye, ningal palayedangalile padituparkala
Under the aspect of the word of God, we see that he will send his angel at many times
Anala, ingay, avan tuudanay anupuminthu, andavare kerkavillai
But he did not request God to send the angel
Indekanegar yenakaaga oru tuudanay anupuminthu, jebikarargal, edhavaru allar
Today, many of them are asking God to send his angel, it's not wrong
Malgiya mounramadigharam mudalama vasanatile, idho, naan en tuudanay unakkum muntbaga anupveen
Malachi 3:1, we see that I send my angel before thee
Ippidi allam varthegale, ningal palayedapadigale, palayedangalile padiparkamudiyam
Even like this, verses you can see in the Old Testament in many places
Palayedapadle, unakkam muntbaga, enidu tuudanay anupveen, avde samugathile, ni gavanamaa irukavendu, nindu chollappadukara
In the Old Testament, it is said that I will send my angel before thee, and you should be very careful before him
Anala, intha manidhan kerkaran, yenakku rendu kariyathin neer anupvavendam
But this man asked God to send two things
Hostal padikarapilla vandutakappadakakum, yenakku dress anippi udenga
And the child standing in the hospital will ask the father to send dress
Pananippi udenga
Send money
Intha bookku vanyanippi udenga
You get this book and send for me
Yenakku sweet vanyanippi udenga
Get me sweets and send
Ilavta, tinbandha vanyankutthu anippi udenga
Or you get me eatables and send
Ibbalak kerkarathal, onmati ellarkam, terinja oru kariyanda
We all know things which are happening like this
Andha pillake, enna tevayyo, adu kerkara
What the child requires is asking
Arumianule, intha viswasa payanathile, oru anmiga payanathile, oru devunadiyapillake avasiamanadu rendu
Dear children of God, what we need in the spiritual life is, in this journey, we need two things
Oru sadhana melugavarti vaitukondu, intha markathile, ni poivudamudiyadu
Keeping an ordinary candle, you cannot go in this religion
Kattarodeyavelicham vandhal, than intha padigal, ni poovamudiyam
Only if you have the light of the Lord, you can go this path
Ida tandeyavalvil, anubavithi, palarodeyavalvil, kattukondu, intha thaaviidhi chollukaraan, andavare, yenakaaga neer rendu kariyathin anupum
This David learned from his life and many of their lives, and says, "God, send two things"
Intha aravanin mudivile, unggalukum gude samayam gudukappadum, ningalum idhay vinnapathai eradukalam, idhay anubavati, ningalum thirtukolalam, paychivikalam
In the close of the meeting also, you will be given time, you too can ask for these two things and practice it in your life
Avan kerkaran, yenakku velichathai anupum
And he asked God to send his light
Continuva, nam irulaiyey pathukondu varukara
I'm continuously seeing darkness
Oru kaalam yenakku, velichamana oru kaalangal irindada
There was a time when it was light
Endraki en melai abishyakam eranginada
But since the day anointing came upon me
Andray irundhu, intha irulin vallemigal, enno oru porattukara
From then, day is the power of darkness driving with me
Adha singkatthin vadivil vandada
That is coming through like this lion
Karadhin vadivil vandada
That is coming in the form of bear
Kohliathin vadivil vandada
It is coming in the form of Goliath
Sauludiyavadivil vandada
This is far coming in the form of soul
Felistergalidivadivil vandada
It is coming in the form of Philistine
Ippidi avan vadushyagathu chollukundeye poogara
Like this, he is repeatedly saying
Oru kattathile, tanudiyapillakale, avanukki irulaga mararambittarakai
And in one situation, his children became his darkness
Avundey padayitalavane, avanuka avirudamaga eliminan
And his armabara also became his enemy
Avundey aara asariene, avanukki avirudamaga eliminan
And the priest also rose against him
Ippidi, palavidamana irulai, avan kadandhu kadandhu, palavedanivilile ponnadhanal, kadaisiyaka avan kettathu, kathaave, ummadiyavelichathai yenakkenirandaramai, anippi arulum
Like this, he is going through many paths, and if they cannot fall, finally, he asks God to send his light
Yenantala, avan yoobuin sarathrathai kettukumadu, yem paditukka iyelum
Because he would have heard of this story and would have learnt it
Yoobu unudiyavalkaye, avan kettukala
He would have heard the words of Job
Irulai kadandubona, anegaya, devunadijanangalidivalkaye, avan kandrukalaam, kettukala
He would have heard of the story and history of the people traversing through darkness
Anala, kadaisiyaka, unudivinnappathile, avan parkumbadu, avan kerkaran, velichathai yenakke anippi arulum
Finally, in this quest, he is asking God to send his light
Intha velicham, edharkaha anuppa padavendu, nindu kerkara
Why is he asking to send out his light?
Indeki, velichathai anippinada, adhu namai naraattum
Today, if he should send his light, then it will lead them
Oru natshatharam, andha saastriyalai, alagaan naraattikondu vandada
A star could lead the old device men to brutally
Andha velichathai kandhadaan, avan vandukundeye irindarakai
It was saying that light they came forward
Priyamanule, ungalai, ethnave, intha velicham naraattavendu, nindu virumbukrierakai
Dear beloved, how many of you desires this light to lead you?
Oru silla kudumate purushan naraattukaraan, oru silla kudumate manavi naraattukara
Some families are led by the husband, some families are led by wives
Oru silla purushanai, manavi naraattukaraal, oru silla manaviye purushan naraattukara
Some husbands are leading their wife, and some wives are leading the husbands
Ah, ungalai, palavidangalile, palavallamigal naraattukara
And many powers are leading you in different paths
Sillerai pisasana naraattukara
And some people are led by Satan
Sillerai, pis, siller, soyamai naraattukarakai
Some of them are walking of themselves
Siller, palavidamana poothugangalile, naraattupadukarakai
Some of them have been dealt by different doctrines
Tamalidu cholluva, sillerke solputtiyil la, soyabutiyil illa
Some of them say that they do not have the knowledge of their own, neither of what is told
Yaar enna chollala, avkutthalayadiyadee poogava
Whatever they see, they will shake their head and go
Priyamanule, adhu oru vaalkey alla
That's not a life
Mudalavada, devunudathirundhu, velicham namakka avasiam
Firstly, we need light from God
Velichathai anippi arulum
Send out their light
Avaygal yenakke, yeney naraattattu
And let them lead me
Ni neerimanasirindhal
If we be a just
Avunakaga, velicham vidhikappadukara
The light is being shown for you
Thonithi yalam sangeedathai nam parkumbadudu
In Psalm 97
11 vasanathile
Verse 11
Neerimanukaga, velicham vidhikappadukara
Light is shown for the righteous
Neerimanudiyapadigal kagaave, kattar velichathai vachirukara, neerimanukagaave, velichathai kattar vidhichu vachirukara
For the path of righteousness, and for righteousness has the Lord kept light
Allavta neerimoligalidha parkumbadudu
That is why reading in Proverbs
Neerimanudiyapaday, naduppagal, andha suriyunidivelichambola
The path of the righteous is like the sun which is in the midday
Appavavu prakashamaga, neerimanudiyapaday irupadaaga, vedam chollukara
Such a bright life is the path of righteous
Neerimanudiyapaday endhavadu, adhu vityasamana
The path of righteousness is different
Neerimoligal, naanga madigharam, 18 vasanathile parkumbadudu
Proverbs chapter 4, verse 18
Neerimanudiyapaday, naduppagal varekku, adigamadigamai prakashikara, suriyaprakashambola
The path of the justice is a shining light that shines more and more in the perfect day
Anamidhanal, nam intha padigale, neerimangalai marinhal, namakkaga velicham vikappadukara Intha velicham namai naraattum
Therefore, if we be righteous in this path, then there is light kept for us, and there is light will lead us
Intha velicham namai naraattumadudu, nam irulai sulabamaga kadakkala
When this light is leading us, then we can easily cross the darkness
Isaravil janangal, elithin parakaramaga, oru payanathile, kaanappadukara
Children of Israel literally were found in a journey
Elithin badiyana, oru kaanane nokki, avargal payanappadukara
They were turning towards a little canon
Andha padigale, avargalukku, endhuvidamana velichamuk kadayadu
In that path, they had no light at all
Iravum payanam dorandadu, pagalum payanam dorandadu
The journey prolonged in the day and in the night
Avargal ponnadu, vanandharangai
They went through wilderness
Manidha, nadamattam, akcha padigalile, avargal ponnadu
They walked through paths where man was not walking at all
Andha naakalile, avargalukku velicham kattinadu yaar
It was on those days who gave them light
Yaatrakamam, 13 vasanathile nam parkumbadudu
When we read in Exodus, chapter 13
21 vasanathile Avargal, iravum pagalum, valinadakkukudumbadike, kattar pagalil, avargalay valinadathamegas stambathilum, iravil, avargalukku velichangatta, akknis stambathilum, avargalukku munshandra
The Lord went before them by a day in the pillar of clouds to lead them the way, and by night in a pillar of fire to give them light
Pagille, bayangaramana veyl
In the day, it was hot sun
Veylil ukkaram
The hotness of the sun
Andha janangal, naraakkumadu
The people cannot walk
Kattar ennamuninara
What did the Lord do?
Andha pagille, avungalukku naraattukuk, megas stambathakatleita
And he commanded the pillar of cloud for that day
Avan ilaiparadalu, andha veylin ushnatha, ariyada vara, kattaravale naraattikundeye vandha
And they will with rest walk in the pillar of cloud that they may not see sun
Silla nairangalile, iravil, avargal payanappadavendu irindadu
Sometimes, they have to journey at night
Ilavta, engya avdu paalayam erangavendu irindadu
Or they have to encamp in some place
Vedam enna chollukara
What does the word of God say?
Iravil, avargalukku velichangatta, akknis stambathila, kattare nindukundirundha
The Lord himself was standing in the night as a pillar of fire to give them light
Akknis stambantchonna, yediyavunna readypundite, avar, sorry, focuspandee, indha light addi, avin chollutupala, avare akknis stambathil, avargalukku munshandra
Pillar of light and fire means, it's not a light where it is focused to give them light, but he himself went before the pillar of fire
Kattare, andha edathile velichamaga, akknis stambathile nindukundirundha
The Lord himself as a light was standing in the pillar of fire
Idaitaan, sangidakkaran, 27 sangeedam mudalama vasanathile parkumbadudu
That is what when Psalm says in Psalm 27 verse 1
Kattar en velichamum, en rakshipum aanavare, endhu chollukara
The Lord is my light and my salvation, he says
Arumianule, unggalidivavalvil, velichamaga, kattare ningal konduvarunga
Dear beloved, bring the Lord as a light in your life
Endha padigale, unggalukki irul jambadukara, andha edathile, ningal oruvisay nindre, andavare, akknis stambathile velichangattinavare, kattare, neere en velichamendu kuupadungal, avar, unggalukku velichamai vandunirpar
Whichever path you might find darkness in your life, then you ask God to come as a pillar of fire, and give you light, and the Lord will be your light
Arumianule, unggalidivalkail, ethnave, oru irul sulnda padigale, intha payanathile poivukundukareerakai
Dear beloved, how many of you are traveling through paths of darkness in your life?
Devan unakkay akknis stambathile munshallumadiyaga, unvavil, velichangattumadiyaga, andavare, ummadiyavelichathai yenakka anupvendu, intha kaalivalile, ningal vinnapamundu virilaga
You ask God that God might come and be a pillar of fire to you and give you light in your life
Andavatku kuupitukelaanga, kathaave, ummadiyavelichathai anupum
You ask the Lord to send light
Appudi ethniyave sachi chollirukara
Like this, many of them have testified
Elithin parakaramaga, oru sagodhrinu, oru biriyat thikathiriyada, oru kaatlaesikikonda
Literally, a brother was caught into a thick forest without any direction
Avar epudhu, namudiyamishalile, oru pastoraga irukara
He is now a pastor in our mission
Avar apurudhu ulitukvaravilai
He did not come to ministry then
Idukki la, idukki, andha malai pradesathile, tanudiyedathikupovavendu, avar ponnada
He was
Kerala, idukki district, noru edhavake
He went into the thick forest of Idukki
Ah, angay ponnabadudu, avar, innan irithruthu, poirlanthu ponnada, anala, adukul irithirchi
He thought it, he can cross the path, but it became dark till then
Avarke enga ponnunthu teriela
He did not know where to go
Andha, andha malai pradesangalile, chuthakka, abdi irithna, adutthi enna stepla irukkuna, enna nuvme teriada oru edhav
The mountain places were full of darkness that no simple place will be seen if you have to step forward
Ippoy, enga kaalvaykaradu, enga kaalvaykakudada
Where to step now, or where not to step now?
Kaladu bakkamaa, nerabonuma, edadu bakkamaa, enga pallaa, enga medu, nuvme teriada, oru nirukamana oru sulnalay
He did not know, he was in a path of distance where he could not know where to go, left or right, or it is a low place or a high place
Anala, nalaa oru aavikuriyamanidhan
But he was a spiritual man
Appudhu, remba, deviiga magatamidivalkaya amithuvithirundha
He had established a light divine that time itself
Ah, avar schoolle, oru vela bath, oru, avar teacheraga vela sidha
He was working as a teacher in a school
Schoolle, oru chinnaprachinayairchi
There was a small problem in the school
Remba kandipana nabari vara
He was a very conditioned person
Ah, remba kandipana oru nabar
He was full of conditions
Anala, ellaruum payapudavaga
Therefore, all of them will be afraid
Oru payan, avar remba kondishitar
He conditioned a person, a boy like this
Ivar tangirindhu, faith home la
He was staying in the faith home
Andha payan, rendu, monuvaru, koottu, chayvara, adikathukaaga, chanda podukukaaga, teacher adikathukku, student, rendu, monu, payan, pariyalangal, koottu, faith homee vendu
That boy gathered two or three or elder persons in order to be the teacher, coming to the faith home itself
Apo, ivar, innoru viswasi, naan faith homee irundukara
Then he and another believer was in the faith home
Ah, apu vandu vaakkavadampani, ivar adikaramstha
And they came inside and began to beat him
Andha viswasi, ivar, innu, adivangara
And that believer, and he was getting the beatings
Avagasolukara
He said
Yengal adichumavi, teriyanai, yengamal adiuladu, anala, avargal rendu, adikathukal, kuppara kuppara buluva, potthupothu, yengal, oru touch ponnava, potthunuluva, karis, enni chaa, avargalile, odi pitaa, endhananandichina, avargalitthan kerkano
We did not know that they were beating us, but they were beating, we know, but we did not have received any pain, but suddenly, they will beat, and they themselves will fall, and after a certain time, they went
Yengal adikathukaradu, teriyanai, anala, yengamal adiuladu, dammu, kerkuk, anala, avargal, rendu, varu, potthupothu, kila, uluva, thiripe, embava, avargal, unnu, odaadu, enna, vaatthiare, adichthara, thiripe, nyosiba, thiripe, adiba, thiripe, uluva, karis, motthama, ellar, yendhun, aalun, oru, odi, pitaa
And the four of them, they came and they continuously beat, but we only hear the blows, and they will fall down, and again, they will rise up and beat, and again, they will fall, finally, they all fled, they only know what happened
Andha kaatle, ivar nikkamvadu
When he was standing in the forest
Titi, inna, oru all, torchchachamara
Suddenly, he felt that the man was lighting a torch
Ah, oru velicham
A light
Avar, abdi, followpandha
He just began to follow the light
Ivar varavandi, adha, varekha, andha velicham vandada, adhu, manushanuk kadayadu, torchuk kadayadu, velichamuk kadayadu
And to the place he has to come, there was a light which was coming for him, after that, there was no man or any torch
Ippidi, elithin parakaramana, oru sulnda valile, oru manidhanukka devan, deebamaga, vandu valikaattuvar, anala, unggal anmiga payanathile, nichiyamaga, andha velicham varumbadudu, ni sulabamaga, irulai kadandupovai
Like this, literally, when you're going through darkness for a little person, if he should come and give his light, then in your spiritual journey, when you're going through darkness, definitely, God will come with light
Isaravil janangalile, 40, 40 oru, vanandharathile, kattanaratinath
The people of Israel, the Lord led them for forty years in the wilderness
Andha 40 orushangalichya, adhula, oru kootathaya, alichthara
After forty years, the Lord destroyed a group of people
Ah, adhi yenndra, oru keldvi, ellar kuleyelumbu
And there arose a question as to why
Adhukka karnanadrima
What's the reason?
Kattarodey seyalak, kannaarakandavargal, anala, kattarukke etamadi, vaaala
They saw the works of the Lord by their own eyes, but did not live according to it
Appidi, kandukumunnaala, parvona, vadiththada, ivangalak, kannaala, pottavaga
They saw the Lord tormenting Pharaoh before their eyes
Kandukumunnaala, megas stambath, appidi, anubavithaavarga
They had experienced the pillar of fire
Akknis stambha, appidi, velichangatti, parvunudiyaseena, appidi, niruthinadu
They saw the pillar of fire, and they stopped the chariot of Pharaoh
Appidi, parvunudiyaseena, varada, alavla, andha akknii, appidi, tadutukundeye vandha
The pillar of fire was hinting that the host of Pharaoh could not draw them
Kandukumunnaala, sangalal, rendhaak, pelandada
Before their eyes, the red sea was split in two
Kandukumunnaala, seenaai, malai, amagime, eranginada
Before their eyes, the glory descended upon their eyes
Avan, naalu, aanathulindhu, oligara, mannavai, pusithara
Every day, the age of man is from heaven
Ellam pathu, palagi, andavara, anubavichu, ruseechi, unme illanavane, avar, ellari, vanandharathile, aliththa
When they saw the experience and tasted God in the wilderness, and they were not faithful, the Lord destroyed them in the wilderness
Kandum, avargal, sariyana vaalkey vaaala
They saw, but did not live a right life
Priyamanule, namakkui, intha naakalile, irulai, velicham kadanduboga, namakkui velichathai anupvendu, avaga, mantraadavendhi, nairam vanduvattada
Dear beloved, it is time for us that we have to plead God to send us light that may cross the darkness
Intha olathralle, endha velichamuk, intha anmiga padigki, namak odhivi seyyada
No light in this world can help us go through the spiritual life
Yaatrakamam, 35, 14 parkumbadudu
In Exodus 35, verse 4
Angay, oru velicham chollappadukara
There is a set of a light
Adhi enna velicham?
What is that light?
Adhi, parisutha salathile, velicham gudukara
That is the light which is given in the holy sanctuary
Asaripukudharathile, velicham gudupada
It is giving the light in the tabernacle
14, velicham gudukkum, kuttu vilakke
It is the light, a candle which is giving light
One ru kattare, unakk velichamai, vandu, unney valinadathuva
Firstly, the Lord himself coming as his light
Avare, unakk velichamai, velipaduva
He himself revealing himself as light
Endavada, kuttu vilakkuk gudukkum velicham
Secondly, the light of the candlestick
Ah, angak chollirukara, velicham gudukkum, kuttu vilakke
There is a set, the candlestick which gives its light
Unudiyapadigal, ni kadanduboga
For you to cross through darkness
One ru kattar unakk velakai, ilavta, velichamai, varukara
One thing is the Lord coming as a light
Irandavada, intha irulai kadanduboga, sabai unakk oru velakke
And secondly, to cross through the darkness, the church is alive
Intha kuttu vilakke, edhak aanvikara
What does this candlestick show?
Sillipaduttil, mudalama adigharam, 20 vasanathile parkumbadudu
Revelation chapter 1, verse 20
Andha pun, kuttu vilakkugalin, ragasyam, enna?
What is the mystery of the golden candlesticks?
Ni kandha, yel, kuttu vilakkugalum, yel, sabai galam
The seven golden candlesticks which you saw are the seven churches
Oru manidhanudiyan, anmiga payanathile, avanukku velicham vandhumanaal, avan sabailarindha, than andha velicham kadaykara, yenandhal, intha kuttu vilakke, velicham gudukkum, kuttu vilakke
If in the spiritual life, if one has to see the light, then he has to be found in the church, because this church is the candlestick
Ah, vedam chollukara, andha yel, kuttu vilakkugalum, yel, sabai galam
The word of God says that the seven candlesticks are the seven churches
Idu daam, parisutha salathuke, ilavta, parisutha salathuke, neevke, nokki, pogarana, mayanujanuke, vaalkeyle, velicham gudukkukudiyasakti
That is why the people who are turning towards the holy sanctuary, this is the light which is giving in their life
Andha, than thaaviidhi sonna, kathaave, yenakke, neer, velichathai, anupum
That is why David says, "Lord, you send out their light"
Andha naakalile, varunga, naathangal, oru thirkathrisirindha
In those days, there was a prophet called Nathan
Adhu daan, avandha, avunukku muntbaga, oru parisuthavanai, jivitha, oru manidhan
He was the only person who lived a holy life before him
Endhaprachinavandhal, naathangan, varuva
In any problem, that Nathan will come
Naladu nanandhal, varuva, ketthadu nanandhal, varuva
Whether good thing or bad things happen, he will come
Ah, avandha, correcta, ivana, leadpanditayirana
He was the only person leading him correctly
Ah, avandhu, tavurna, kondishruva
He will correct him if he is wrong
Naladun sonna, avukudiyani, par
If it is good, he will stand with him
Andha thirkathrisi, varada, vachathale, saalam, unkupadaviyak, kadasirka
If that prophet did not come, Solomon would not attain his position
Andraki, avan oru, avan naraattakudiyavu, oru sakthi, ulavu, oru parisuthavanaga irindha
He was a holy saint who could lead him those days
Bassebal, vishyathile, tavurna, odane, odane, vandu, kadiindukundha, mudalamunshamavanda
In the matter of Bathsheba, when he went wrong, he was the one who came and condemned him first
Andha pillai, vadiputti, kevalamaga, irukumadudu, ivan, ubavas, jebichaa, avan, sonna, yen, ubavasamorra, pillai, sahu, kattar chollitaran, sonna
When that child was sick and so death, then, when he fasted and prayed, he said, "Why are you fasting?", the Lord said that he will surely die
Andraki, thaaviidukku velicham gudukkara, anak kuttu vilakkaaga, andraki, andha naathan, kaanappadhaan, avan oru devunadiyamanidhan
That Nathan was found as a candlestick to David to give him light, he was the man of God
Palayedapathle, oru kuttu vilakkuk, asaripukudharathik, velicham gudukkumanaal, pudiyedapathu, sabai, oru manidhanukka, velicham gudukkara, intha anmiga padigale, irulai kadanduboga
If in the Old Testament, a candlestick will get light, for the tabernacle, even so, in the New Testament, this church will give you light to go in the spiritual life
Idellam, manasile vachikudutha, remba, shata kerkara, kathaave, velichathai, anupum
Keeping all this in his mind, in short, he asked God to send their light
37 sangeedam, 6 vasanathile parkumbadudu
In 37 Psalm 6
Ah, saathangisaakaran, enna chollukara
What does the psalmist say?
Unneedi, velichathai polavum, unnyaayam, patta, pagalai polavum, ilangappanduvar
He shall bring forth righteousness as a light, and the judgment as a day
Ikay, sulappadukara, intha velicham endhavadu, needi, ikonvikara
The light shown here is righteousness
Ummadiyavelichathai anippi arulumandha, kathaave, ummadiyeneedi, yenaka anupvendu, artha
If he has to send his light, then Lord said out their righteousness, meaning
Devunadiyeneedi enna?
What is the righteousness of God?
Yanasana midupadu, unpadigale, oru velicham
Taking baptism gives you light in your path
Ippidi devunadiyeneedi niravathuvu, namakkui eethada, irukara
It is good for us to fulfill the righteousness like so
Devunadiraajyam, fusipum, gudipum alla, adhu, needi, samadhana mu, parisuthaavi nal, undakum, sandosham, endhu, parlogarajyathin, tayvigat, thanme, eethul, irukara
For the kingdom of God does not meet and drink, but righteousness and peace and joy in the Holy Ghost, this is the heavenly kingdom
Ni needikey, kilpadiyumadudu, adhuve, unney velichamaga, maati, adhuve, unirulai kadanduboga, unak odhivi seyyam
When you should obey to the righteousness, it will turn your darkness and make you to a better life
Sariyana, yanasana, unkudumatal, irukara, sabathu, veroda, pudigidu
Right baptism will take the curse uprooted from your life
Ningal, pasarul, dhasavale, ningal, partrukalaam, kettukalaam, kandrukalaam
You would have known about Pastor Arul Das, heard of him, and would have seen him
Avar, thutukulile, gude, oru pasaraga, center pasaraga, irundha
He was a center pastor until he got into
Avar, apurudhu, yanasana, gudukkumadu, namak, gude, nippa
When he gives baptism, he will stand with him
Al, periyathothiyaruk
That will be a big tank
Andha yanasana, irukara, yengal, erangava
And those of them who take baptism will get down
Adhuvarekka, remba, teliva, elivingi, satthiyatalan, kettu, amen, ninime, pavanjeyamata, ellan, sulidu, than, ulavavuva, thotiukul, erangadhum, bhatta, ellan, aadu
Until then, he would come make a confession and say that he will know more sin with a determination he will get in, but when he gets into the tank, he will be shaking
Oru tripu, bhatiyana, andha tanni kula, yalitupradasi, yalitupradasi, yaragutukara, varusia, gudukporara, ivarunthani kula, erangiyache, oru, naal, inju, sagodhrinu, naal, inju, prabhasara
One, seven, eight brothers got into the tank, and he also went inside, and four, five brothers and sisters were dancing
Ellaa, aadu
They were all shaking like that
Ah, naang, ivar, enna, phonnaporada, ellan, aadharana, na, avar, ah, correct, sariyana, nathil, vandutiyega, ah, iban, kuukavara, adukumala, aadi, moochchirun
And he said, "It's good that you've come at the right time, I'm going to give baptism, you should dance before that and finish"
Yenak, yanasana, eduttha, ivam, melai, unakk enna kadayadu, ivam, melai, ivam, melai, unakk enna kadayadu, power kadayadu, adigharam kadayadu
Because after he takes the baptism, you had no control about him or her
Adhu cholladu, amma, adhu, teriyanjana, naa, aadi, ikutukaa
And that spirit is saying, knowing only, "I am shaking like this"
Avan, naan, adukkai, time
That's the time
Ah, aadu, varunga, enna, aadu, aadu
And you should see how it was shaking like that
Ah, vega, modinavane, right, poetiya, poeti, right, adhu, varu, yanasana
After its speed has gone, he said, "You've gone", and now he baptized
Ippan, namapadi, avagala, kudukadaanala, inge, vandu, thiripe, aadharan, sabaila
Because half the people are not getting baptism like this, they are again rolling about in this church
Ippav, vera, mari, aadu
Now, they are dancing differently
A, mudiyavirichu, potta, aadharan, kudumathu, potta, aadharan
Now, not putting out their head, they are not dancing, but dancing with family
Sabaila, kollappamani, aadharan
Causing confusion in the church and dancing
Veetaputta, aadharan
And shaking the families
Ah, ayungak, kerkara, yanasana, edutthangale, sabai, kuupitangale, ayu, adhu, poohavillai
Now, they ask, they have taken baptism, they've gone to the church, that spirit is not gone
Ah, enika, anegar, kula, idhu, kadandu, poradu
Today, this spirit is striving, many of them
Unneedi, oru velicham
Your righteousness is a light
Sariyana, vishyam, bachinna, andha, andha, odiyabu
If you receive right baptism, the spirit will flee
Oru avi, daan, unakkul, irukamudiyam, yedavi, irukamudiyadu
Only one spirit can decide, and you not seven
Asutthavi, puita, parisuthavi, vandharu
When the unclean spirit goes, the holy spirit will come
Ah, daavi, usaidu, nam, intha naakalile, namudiyeneedi, velicham endhavadu, marandukuda, kodada
You should not please forget that your righteousness is a light
Over step to step, paani, vara vara, velichathile, neer, adiyathukundu, vathukundu, varukara
Every step you go ahead, you are going ahead in your light
Allavta, vedam chollukara, avar, velichathil, velicham, gangarav
That is why the word of God says, "We see light in the light"
Avar, udiyavelichathile, innan, namavelichathai, gangarav
We see light in thy light
Kathodiyaya parisutha namathukumai mundaavada
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
Aduttu, avarudiyamugathin, velicham
Nextly, light on his face
81, dam, sangeedathai, parkumbadudu
And read 89 Psalm
Angay, enna, sulappadukara
What is said there?
81, dam, nam, parkumbadudu
Psalm 81
81, dam, idhe, ummadiyay, vas, unni, mugathin, velicham, endhu, oru vasanam, unde
Psalm 89
89, 15
Verse 15
Angay, enna, chollirukara
What is said there?
Gambiresatha, kettkara, janangal, baki, mulavarga
Blessed, there's the people that know the joy of the sun
Avargal, unudiyamugathin, velichathil, naraappaga
They shall walk in the light of their countenance
Andavarudiyamugathin, andha, velicham, irukara
In the light, on the countenance of God and light
Andha, andavarudiyamugathin, velichathila, naman, naraakkana
We should walk in the light of his faith
Abidin, enna, thaa
What does this mean?
Andavarku, muntbaga, neerindhu, undya valkaya, amakana
You should establish your life before the Lord
Allavta, tonithi, 1,50, aabraham, kattar, pesumadu, yenakku, muntbaga, naramdu, vandu, ni, edhi, unmay, uttamanaga
That is why when Abraham was 99 years old, he said, "You..."
That is why when Abraham was ninety-nine years old he said, you walk before me and be the upright. If we be before the Lord then we can cross through in that light itself. The light of his countenance. The light of his countenance is shining in a heart. That is why he said, Lord, send thy light. When the light of the Lord comes we will go through this path. Therefore, how many of you this morning is going to ask God to send delight from you? When we read in Psalm one hundred and nineteen. Your word is the light. The word of God is a light. Then we have the word of God in our hands how much of light it is. Every word is a light. That word itself is a light. The command is the lamp and the word is the light. Proverbs six twenty-three we can read this. The word of God is a light to us. If man gets a word then he will keep that word all the lives of life. I came newly to the religion. I did not know the word of God more. I did not know how many chapters the word of God. But I came into God. And the Lord began to speak to me. But I did not know any words. That was a time. And I was sitting in the New Year. I had a small diary. And the Lord kept speaking continuously. I could understand that he is speaking something I do not know where the location is. It seems that he speaks not without any continuance but as far as I knew I was keeping on writing. After that my sister had studied Sunday school I came and asked her. Did the Lord speak to you? Firstly, I asked, do you know that there is a word like this? She did not know. I too did not know. Only after some days I found it out. And that was my calling and saying so I came to ministry. The words which the Lord spoke in that time when I was ignorant when I came newly that was my calling I know that your calling. It was a word which had no relevance. I did not know the head or tail of that word. It was without any relevance. I did not know if it was in eighty-one or eighty-two or eighty-three. Suddenly the Lord spoke to me that day. One word. And many verses came and I was writing two verses. Of it was one word. That was the word. I did not know who is Zarephath and who is the son. I had not read the word of God I do not know where the book of Kings was. And somebody has given me a Bible. I came newly inside. And when the Lord began to speak somebody said, you write and keep. It will be useful for you in the latter days. And I came and sat. All of them was filling in the spirit when I came for the New Year I could not get to fill in the spirit but the Lord was speaking to me that it's son of Zarephath I do not know where the location is. The Lord will repeat the holy name of the Lord. The Lord called me for ministry. And some of them said that I had seen a vision like this I saw a sand grazing the sheep. Except to be called like Aaron no person is being ordained for this ministry. And they asked me as to what my calling was. I said, he called me as the son of Zarephath and I came. And that was alright. Why I say this? It was that word which was leading me until this day. When all of them are asked to reckon by their calling I will get this advice. From the day he has called me this sound is sounding my ears. Even yesterday I was saying that as the Lord does call me even so you should make me to live a life unto the ministry. It was just one word. That word is a light. That word is a light. Holding on to that one word we can go on until eternity. And where the psalmist says like this. There are many verses in the word of God. But I know a word which made me to believe. There are many verses in the word of God but there is one word which made me to believe. Psalm one hundred and nineteen verse forty-nine. And the word which you have made me to believe you remember that word. There are many verses in the word of God many promises too but there is a word which is spoken to you and that is your life. Like this each of them will have a personal experience. If you have not received you ask and practice it. That is why ask the people who are going through problems and those who are sick you ask a word from the Lord. You ask it from the Lord. That one word will leave you all the days if you live. Because there's a great power in it. Thy word is a light and the word of God is a light. By one word has many of them saved. By one word how many families have been redeemed? One word has made a man as a millionaire. One word is making one person as giant as a summative cause. Those who were fishing the Lord said, come behind me I will make you fish as a men that one word came back didn't follow him. That is why he says, Lord, you send thy word thy light. Send out thy word. Send the righteousness. Send the pillar of fire, Lord. Let me walk in the light of their countenance. If the father is having a light and carrying his child then the child is also crossing into the darkness with that light. When that king is saying about Daniel that there is light in him. Because that light came into him. Daniel chapter five verse fourteen. I have heard that the spirit of God is in thee and that light and understanding and excellent wisdom is found in thee. See what a clear word he utters. I heard that there is light in you. What do you do with that light? You are able to show the interpretation of dark things. Do we have the spirit of light? If we have the spirit of light. Then we will become precious in this path. What did the light do? It lifted up Daniel to the third person and that's a plea. The clear reasons for the Lord to lift him up is cited here. When the word of God says in another interpretation. In Daniel five eleven. In him is the spirit of the Holy God. In him is the light and understanding and excellent wisdom. What a clear word is said about him. In him is light. It was that light which led him and lifted him up to the third position in the land of Hattie. It is the person who is a slave who he was brought into the kingship was this light. It is a young lad who is preserved in his consecration is this light. A young person to preserve himself that he might be holy in this life was this light. He lived as a god who was living without flesh. That is why David asked God send me the light. In this life of darkness and the life of problems in this faith life let that lead me. In from that pillar of fire you lead me. From the candlestick which is the church the sons of God let them lead me. Let this baptism and anointing lead me. Let me walk in the light of their countenance. Let me walk in the light of the word. Isaiah. Chapter fifty-one. Verse four. I have established my judgment to be a light to the people. The law is established as a light. There is a law to the church. In the old testament it was the law. But in the new testament it's the doctrine. The law in the old testament and doctrine in the new testament. That is the law to the church. That is the law, doctrine is the law. And law is the light and that law should lead you. Not to say however you want you can live but you should live like this. In reading Romans six seventeen. But that you have obeyed to the doctrine which is written to you thanks be to God. In the old testament is the law and new testament is the doctrine. Before we have to obey to these laws. Transgressing the law's sin. It's not a law according to for our own church alone but under the aspect of the word of God that is adopted. There is no law or doctrine which is written only for the Pentecostal church in the word of God. But there is an apostolic doctrine. That is clearly spoken in the word of God. We should stand in that doctrine. That is the law. Why if one is not fighting according to the law he cannot be crowned. You see in the sports. If you place your legs in the track it's over. If you should place your feet before this commanded it's gone. You might have talents with the manpower and the power to overcome but if you cross the track it's gone. For that you cannot blame anyone. Like this. There is apostolic doctrine which is given to you to walk in this place because like this and that is a light. Now David ask God send your light. That light let it lead me. Nextly, the word which he says. Lord, you send out that truth. What does this mean? Firstly, because there was darkness he asked for light. Nextly, he is asking for truth. What is truth? Is it a promise? That is not that promise. This shows the depth of doctrine. This shows the doctrine of the word of God. Because he was hearing many voices. He was hearing the voices of men. When Eroni's doctrines he has heard. He has heard the voice of Satan. Even today many of them are hearing the voice of Satan. I hear some voice in my ear. There is something appearing in my mind. Something is appearing in my heart. He is diverting the message what we preach. I will tell you the first device of the devil. I will tell you the first cause which the Satan has done. Preaching another thing contrary to the word of God. You shall die on the day when you shall eat of this fruit. This is hard. He has created man beautifully in his likeness and image and first condition which he has laid this that a sharp sword which will break into two. And that was a different preaching to him. Nextly, he heard a message. Is there anything which the Lord has spoken to you? A new pastor came in Genesis chapter three. And in the second chapter Jesus, God was a preacher. And then third verse came another preacher. Is there anything which the Lord has commanded you? Immediately he spoke. Yes, he shall eat of all the fruit of the garden but that he might not die you should not eat of this fruit they said. In chapter three verse four he said, he is preaching that he shall not die. They did not know what is divinity or what is flesh. And he said, you eat of this fruit for you shall not die. And nextly, you will become as gods and come down from heaven. Which preaching is good? Which preaching is nice? When my mother when I was ministering in Chennai. I went to her house one day. She was in great sorrow. I asked why. Every week you preach very beautifully but why did you speak so toughly this week? Every week I came with blessing but this week became tears for me. Then I thought as to what message it was this week. Nehemia said that if one who is getting ashary for one percentage for hundred percentage then he will be cut off like this I preached. If you get for ashary then you will be destroyed that is what I preached and because she was getting that ashary it was a problem with her. And should I say that he will be blessed if you get for interest and you keep on getting that ashary can I write the word like this? Any of them giving interest like this? And I do not know why this message is coming to this interest. You should not do like this. You would say that I am getting only for one price the other places they are getting for five pence and two pence and so on but for one price he will destroy you he says. You just hark unto this truth like carefully. If you say that you've got only for less or more than it's gone. In Nehemia chapter five verse thirteen you can see this. I said that you can take from her, give to her that which you have got for one out of the hundred. And in verse thirteen he says that anyone who is not fulfilling this promise he shall be shaken out and shall be emptied and everyone said amen. Immediately a new testament comes. Yes, uruthandachonnar, ennodhey panaththi neevakasukkakarantakoduthirundhal, naan vendu vattiode vangi koduvan chonnar, appai yesuve vatti vangalan chonnaruncholukarad.
If Jesus said is a parable, that if you should go and give it to the money exchanges, then I will get it in ashari, then Jesus himself asked to give ashari.
Nee om panathasavepani vekala, aduk government koduthanam, bank kodutha vangi ko, adavittutte, nee pay financele pottu motamathu idu peruvam.
You can save your money if the bank interest is given to you, you can get this but totally don't give it into the finance.
Adavittutte.
Leaving that.
Viswasivilke vatti koduthiti, nee ammati talaya kodad.
And giving the interest to the believers, you should not cheat around.
Avangal cholukarad, vattiin chonnarad, avan baya thodra thirimby kodukarad, illana stottharamuntu payiravam.
And they say, when only if he says it's for interest, then he is with fear getting that money or is saying please Lord go.
Biblella enna cholukarad, thirima, kayumaru karadhamal kadanggud.
The word of God says, you lend that you might not see in exchange.
Avinno enna artham?
What does it mean?
Kayumaru karadhamal kadanggud, enna artham?
Not expecting exchange.
Thirumbavadumandru ennamal kadanggud.
You give, you lend that you will not expect in return.
Idhu vittu vittu, nee vendu asalenni chandiyapodakudad, enakkipona varan kodukarandhu nee, indhavaran kodukarandhu nee, monu varan avan thodratharamchina, avan service kettayavaramata, ooriyayavudva.
Leaving this, you should not come and fight saying that you promised to give me last week and this week and if you continuously fight like this for three weeks he will flee.
Viswasivilke vattikey kodukakudad.
Believers do not give for interest.
Viswasivilke kodukakudad.
You should not give to the believers.
Viswasivilke kodukal vangal vekkakudad.
And to believers you should not give, give and take.
Appudi onakkataralam manathirundhal kodukallam kettakudad.
If you have a broad mind you can give but not ask back.
Oru vela avan thirumbak koduthal vangi kodala.
If he should give back in return you can receive it.
Adavittutte, avan kathathapudichin erukakudad.
Leaving that you should not put his neck in a straight.
Illanam, onda illanu solidu, irundichinna kodukamudiyadu, nee oppana solidu.
If you have, you say you give and otherwise you say you are not able to give in open way.
Ivangoray platelessavdvaanga.
They will eat in one plate.
Oray vandila vavanga.
They will go in one vehicle.
Oray viddilpattukavanga.
They will go sleep in one house.
Apapatiyinkana, ivan angakodupam, amayinka kodupam, karichil prashanana vendhodanay, appanana nammatavaro, ivangayedukke oray platelessavdakaradu thirium.
Those days they will give and take but when problem comes it is then we can understand that they ate one plate.
Avinno seyyave kodad.
We should never do this.
Ekkaranavunutte viswasivilke, viswasivilke kodukal vangal pannadinay.
In no occasion should believers give an exchange with believers.
Ningavandhey edhavnaal vaaththi kakkavariya, adukuda varaavarama unayathvartiudukavam.
He will, you are coming here to get, take one word, he will chase you that you may not receive this.
Onakkathar kodutharana, nallu panaththiyyukodukano, adhenathal onakkunna lavisalamana mananayukodukano, nee kodu, kathar avan, nallaa asirudikittam, onning kathar asirudipa.
If the Lord will give you, then he will give you the money and also your mind to give to them, you give and the Lord will bless him off.
Thirumbakadakumengar, edhiruparpooru nee kadang kadang kodukakudad.
Do not lend with the mind that you will expect it back.
Kayumathukodukal, avan thirimby koduthavangi ko, illana adukni chanda vodrad.
You can give an exchange but if he is not giving back don't go and fight.
Nan cholukarad, ungalukusariyandhu ningal avikuruyarul vathukoluvirkaay.
And the spiritual people will acknowledge that it's right what I'm saying.
Pastor cholukarad, bata, yalegal kodu visiyakudadungrara, avinla, yaam viyu, om mandeleyathikunna, karakta athikunna.
It's not to say that pastor said like this and I should not help the poor, but you should exactly take this in your mind.
Ah, indha prasangathrinde aviyanudhey viyu enna garadu nee kandubidin.
You should understand their view of the message.
Kodunga.
You give.
Nee kadang vangadupay, kadang kodupay.
You, you, you shall lend and not take.
Ah, ana avanga koduthavangi ko.
But if they give you return, they take back.
Anthamana parame onakkiliyah, nee kodukad.
If you don't have that mind don't give.
Avan patthayara kattan, ayara koduthidu stottharam, jen solidu, pona poto, kanti kanakalashattukad.
If he's asking for ten thousand, you can give a thousand and let him go and leave it long.
Vitturad, vittur.
And you leave it.
Ah, adukkaaga, engayame, indha prashniyae varakudad.
There should no problem arising like this anywhere here.
Idhu karichil vendu pastattavandu ningal kodad, nee rabojinadukad, thadayaarukad kodad, sevasamuthukavaradukad thadayaagam amayinduvadak kodad.
Finally it should not be a problem coming to the pastor and you taking a hindrance for you to take the communion or you coming to the presence of God.
Namindhanavutle rambagavanamasu irukavindi oru kala.
This is the time when we should be very careful these days.
Neenavandcholukarad, ummadiyathirtthiyatthi enakkaniipiyarudam.
Here he says, Lord send thy truth.
Satyam enbu, erumukkiyamana.
Truth is most important.
Ah, avanaykakaran, andavare ummadiyathirtthiyatthi enakkannup.
He's saying, Lord you send your truth.
Vedam cholukarad, vasaname satyam.
Word of God says that the word is true.
Ah, indha satyaththi enanupcholukarad.
Why is he asking to send this truth?
Ondu avanndhey father.
One thing is his path.
Aduk velichantav.
He needs light to this.
Rendavudhu valkeeki indha satyantav.
Secondly for his life he needs this truth.
Lifeamathirudhu indha satyanna.
It is this truth which is in his life.
Prasangam kakkumbele, oru prasangam ondraminaran ningal kakkiringa, oru manaranketikina, idhu kulleye, onakkulle oru maathasambuvichirukano, adham prasangam.
You are hearing the message from one and one and half hours, within this is that there should be a change in you, that is message.
Indha vaaththi kakkumbele, onakkulle, avile, atmaule, sarirathle, undhey businessle, engangalak, karackpanidum, nee karackpanidite varanam.
When you hear this message itself, you should correct yourself wherever it is needed in your body, soul and spirit and any business too.
Na oru manaravathikirad.
I am, I am sewing for one hour.
Illadu ondraminaran vathikirad.
One and a half hours in sewing.
Indha ondraminaran vedel, adu enga poyu uddin, nee pattihtiteyirukon.
In the sewing of one and a half hours you should test where it's going and falling.
Or life ondhu kalummarundichinna, paramarundichinna, adu angaladu udu.
If your light is stony like a rock it will fall there.
But kakkumbele, shichpe, kakkumbele, interestarukon, ana but balanukkade, appudi veyil varumbadu, idhinjiru, kanchu onnillamatiinju pay.
You will interestingly hear this but it will be of no use because when the sun is waxing hot it will become dry.
Illavam hot, ondu vali, valibola irundichinjana.
Or if there is, your heart is like the wind.
Ah, appudi idhinjina, indhaveda udu.
This seed will fall.
Neepakkumbele, nallarukke, nallarukke, ba, adukulle mindukolambiru, manasu maridu, indha paravaygal vendu, enngangal, adu edutukondupayivadu, onakkay, shangalangatta, inneki enna prasangam, ama enna prasangam, enna prasangam, enna poiicchad, kaka, paravyadutipoyicch.
You will say that the message is good but because now ways said, that the, the, the birds are taken away and you will not realize as to what the message is by.
Anatheneerathal, om hot, ondu mulu, nirjilu, oray vedanayum, sanjalamu, kolapathal, nee ukkandhinda prasangathakakattu, kakkumbele, nallarukke, 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 ba, patte, indha mulu, valara vadaad, indha satyathinbidi onenikkavada.
But if your heart is as the thorns and if you have, if you are being distressed by all these thorns then this word will not be able to operate in you.
Ana, indha satyaththi nee karakta kettina.
But you should exactly hear this word.
Kakkumbele, change.
And there will be change when you hear this.
Yoan, padinayindu, munevunithi ningal parkumbele.
In John fifteen verse three.
Ningal kettu ubadesathithinal, ippudude, ningal sutthamakirikkaay.
By the truth you have heard, you are now clean.
Andav, televas vesrar.
The Lord clearly speaks.
Alakana vaaththiyad.
That's a beautiful word.
Na ungalukichonnu ubadesathithinalae, ningal, ippudede sutthama irukirikkaay.
He are now clean through the word which I have spoken to you.
Kakkumbele, oru changing nandukittayirukon.
As you hear, there will be a change in you.
Adukni enna chenidu thirima, manasu oru manupadithi stottharamanidite, kettiditeyirukon.
For that you should keep your mind on one and praise God and hear.
Abhishekathodukkattiditeyirukon.
In anointing you should hear.
Andhupvaathavarambele, indha vaaththiye, indha satyathrinde thanmin, thirima, kakkumbele, onen sutthamakko, om paavaththani vartisenchiditey.
The tendency of this truth is, it will make you clean and make your, uh, uh, and cleancy of your sins.
Ah, onudhey paavaththi niwartisayyum.
It will replenish your sins.
Needimuligal.
Proverbs.
Padinaru araparkumbele.
Chapter sixteen verse six.
Kirubayum satyathum, satyamum paavaththi niwarti pannam.
And the grace and truth which will make you to replenish of your sins.
Namudhey jeevithle, modalavudhi indha satyathilulde thanminana, kirubayinallum, satyathinallum, pawam, niwarti ahum.
And by the mercy and truth and the sin will be purged out of us.
Or naaluvaran indha charchikini, devanndhey vaaththi kakkumbele, naaluvidamana gunangal onakkulalandhu alikkeppadukon.
When you hear the four kinds of messages for four weeks then four characters should be destroyed from you.
Over naalu, nee devanndhey vaaththi kakkak, onakkulle alikkeppadavendiya, devanukupriemalada karangalallam, alindhu, undhey pawam niwartiayikitey varan.
And see here the word of God, that which things which has not been pleasing to God should be destroyed and the iniquity should be purged.
Adukthaavankakaran, satyaththi anuppo.
That is why he asked to send the truth.
Avanvalkeelapala tolvigal.
There are many failures in his life.
Palapavangal.
Many sins.
Adunimitham palanyayipirpugal.
And because of that many judgments.
Ivan chenjita pappunala, avan pilla adiputichal, adu kevalama poi setupochi.
And for the wrong that he has done his child died and will die.
Tappunala, yeluvudanayira veersattanga.
And.
Ivan saytha tavarinala, yeluvudanayira veersattanga.
And because of the sin that he has done, seventy thousand people died.
Pramanathinbidi sailbadada pachathle, ah, ayrakkanakana janangal avanndhey naatla settham.
When he is not operating according to the law, thousands of people died in his land.
Mayangaramana punchangal undanadu.
There were many famines which occurred.
Adaladhaavandcholukarad, kathaasatiyaththi anupung, indha paavaththallam kunchi niwarti paniyavudanga.
That is why he asked God to send the truth and purge out his sins.
Yoan, ettu, mupati irandinbadi parkumbele.
In John eight thirty two.
Satyam oru manidhanay widhulayakkukarade.
Truth is delivering a man.
Oru maamsutle kattappatta valke, avile kattappatta valke, palavidamangalile, porattangalile, sikikonda valke, idhu marunna, indha satyathinala than mudiyam.
The life which is entangled in sins and, and the life which is entangled in some many problems, if it should be delivered, it is only possible with truth.
Padinalorsho, ayil kaidiyaraka.
And for fourteen years he was.
Oru manisham, padinalorsho, ayil kaidiyaraka, vachikka.
He, he was a prisoner for fourteen years.
Ah, adu ayil kaidi.
He was a prisoner for all his days.
Avanke life, adu life indhan cholukavangalar.
It was a life prisoner.
Ayil kaidi, na padinalorsho, avan irukkannu, jaila.
If it is a life prisoner, he should be there in the jail for fourteen years.
Padinalorsho, kalchi, avan veliyavarambu, oru order varavam.
And after fourteen years when he comes he will an order.
Vinalayin oru vaaththi.
And there will be a word in it.
Andhavaththi vaththoni, avan jailalandhi veliyanapavam.
And when he is saying that word, they will send him out of that jail.
Courtlerundhi, order vendukon.
And there will be an order from court.
Ah, avan veliyavavam.
He is coming out.
Adu bolay, indha satyam onakkavandhu, undhey, chareerupelallam, otachi, takathu, nee veliyavunduvar.
That like this, the truth should remove all your prison natures and should bring you out.
Adaladham biblecholukarad, satyaththi, adivirikal, satyam ungalay widhulayakk.
They, for the word of God says, he shall know the truth and the truth shall make you free.
Orusalukkandhuk, indha satyam, puriyamattad.
Some of them don't understand this truth.
Illadu, yathukolamudiyala.
Or they cannot accept it.
Adu ebringa, idhu ebringa, kodapurangala, adu kodamburadu, karna, abhisheegal, nalalalakodapam.
They are confused as to how this shall be and that can be because without anointing they are not able to understand.
Yoan, padinaru, paniirandala, idhakurithi, yesu pesumbele.
When Jesus speaks about this in John sixteen twelve.
Innum anega karangalay, naan ungalukuchollavindi tha irukarade.
And there are many things which I should say to you now.
Ananal, ippududu ningal ivagali thangamatiyirukka.
But you cannot endear of this now.
Satyaviyakaya, avarumbele, avar ungalasagala satyathukolum, varinadathuvar.
When the spirit of truth is coming, he will guide you into all the truth.
Patingala, idhunne enna vilangi koltar.
From this word do we understand?
And Jesus says that there are many things that I should speak you my apostles through the Holy Spirit. There are many things which I should bear record of them now but you don't have the Holy Spirit therefore you will not bear. But when the spirit of truth is coming into you he will guide you into all the truth what's that truth? What is all truth? What does that meaning? That's the truth. Holy Spirit is the truth. And life of separation is the truth. And keeping the faith is the truth. Keeping the consecration is the truth. Keeping the life of holiness is the truth. Like this you come every week and new truth will be given to you. In the word of God we cannot say that you have preached everything. There are many saints who are preached only one by one but they stay together. One was and it will keep changing every week. Therefore truth will be in you. In John seventeen seventeen. And the truth shall sanctify you. That is why he says you deliver me purge me out of my sins and you make me holy and sanctify me for that you said your truth. You say as to why you have the truth? Why did he ask for truth? Why have you got the Bible? You read that truth. When you learn it. When you search the depth. When you get the explanations of the doctrine. Firstly by this truth will your sins be touched. Secondly by this truth you will have a life of delivery. Thirdly you will be sanctified by this truth. And this should not depart from you. Truth shall be always in your hands. This truth is like a lion. And he should be happy in that lion. You should love this truth. Second Thessalonians in two ten it said the love about the truth. When you hear this truth they should not be hated but you should be interested more in it. That is why he said Lord you send thy light and thy truth. According to Isaiah twenty six two open the gates of the righteous nation which keepeth the truth man. He said send both these two and it shall lead me. He said thou the light and thy truth. Let them lead me. You send them both and let them lead me. This light and truth will lead you. Not strange powers. No man should lead you. No preacher of a church should lead you. Your mother loves not lead you. And your mother leading you for small matter. But in your spiritual life it is light and truth which is leading you. That is our mother and father. Those are two eyes to us. That is why he never asked his father to lead him but send other light and their truth let them lead. This light and this truth it will exactly lead you. She gives says that I am no more well no worthy a talk to receive the truth which you have. This light and this truth have power to lead. Is the Lord leading you? Eliezer said that the Lord led me in the straight path. When you see the history of the Israelite. That's a very short route to go to Canaan. But how many years did they walk? For forty years. Because they were not led in a straight path. But if you are Eliezer. If you were united with Abraham. The Lord will lead you in this path in a straight path. You standing in faith. If you be a man who is led by the Holy Spirit. Genesis twenty four forty eight. Eliezer says that the Lord led me in the straight path. I did not roam about. I did not go searching. He did not know the address. But the Lord led him in a straight path. He said led him exactly. How many of you believe this? The Lord led me in the straight path. And you should not be roaming about in this religion. There's no need for you to journey for many years to Canaan. A one mother went to meet another girl in another foreign country. She was journeying in a ship. Suddenly the captain of the ship entrance spoke to her. And unfortunately he spoke to her. Whom are you going to see? Where are they? Like this he was enquiring. And that mother said. I know they are in that country but I not know exactly where they are. But I know only the place. And the captain of the ship said. And the captain said. And the captain said. But that captain on hearing the name of that place said that a hundred kilometers of the where the ship is boarding from there you should go and find him. I think you would have read of this incident in a book. What happened here was. He felt very pity for her. This mother said. No I have come praying. The Lord will come out take me there. And the captain said. And the captain said. He thought that this woman is so without any clearness and how will she go so many kilometers afar and find out her child? Finally what happened? He was pity upon her. He was pity upon her. And the captain said. 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 Somow we shall take her and get her boat on to a bus where it is going on to that place and some way she will find her. And immediately the mother said say immediately the Lord has given me a person. Now both of them got out of the ship. And finishing his work he came bringing this mother into the main road. And it was high traffic. There was a great group to cross the road and he was also standing with them. And the signal was clear. And the people were going ahead to the other side. In this confusion that captain of that mother. And she along with the crowd went to the other side of the road. Now again the signal became cleared and it went on. And the captain is on the other side and she came to the other side. And when he was thinking as to what will happen to this mother. There was another traffic which is stopped in the other side the opposite crowd was waiting. And it was her mother son-in-law who came dashed against her. He came on some job to that place and when he saw her he was amazed and he asked as to how he came and it's the Lord who brought me. And he asked as to whether you know her she said this is my son-in-law I will go with him. If the Lord will lead you he will lead you correctly. What the Lord does leading is light and truth. You should ask the Lord to lead us in the eternal way. If you see if there are ways which are causing pain in my life and lead me in life eternal. And the Lord says that I will lead you continually. I will keep my eyes upon you and give you comfort. I will show you the path when you should walk. When you lean on to the left or to the right there will be a voice from behind you saying this is the path. This is why this Thomas asks God to send the light and truth whether I be on the throne or in the wilderness they will let this both lead me. The leading of the Lord is not one or two days. And Philippians one five. So he who has begun the good work in him. And we believe that until the day of Jesus Christ he is able to keep you. And until the end the Lord lead you. The day of Jesus Christ shows the coming of the Lord. The light and truth will lead you until the day of Jesus Christ. That is the power of his word. There are this path of these two to lead you. The Lord will give you a beautiful leading. In your workplace. In your business. In your household matters. In your family matters. In your land matters. In your ministries. In your journeys. You give the control for the Lord to lead you. Let him be a captain. Let him be the one who is leading you. Let him be the marker for you. And let him be the light on your path. And he will lead you until the end. And the Thomas says this God will lead us even until death. What this said Paul? This God will lead you until the day of Christ. What should he do? Send out the light and thy truth let them lead me and bring me into the holy hills the tabernacles. Firstly taking you to the holy hill. And secondly taking you to the tabernacles. What is holy hill and what is the tabernacle? One is the church nextly is secondly it is the heaven. How can we understand this? Reading in Isaiah fifty six seven. The holy hill which is told here shows the house of prayer. In reading Isaiah fifty six seven. What is told there? I will bring them to my holy mountain and make them choice. This light and truth will take you firstly to the house of friends earth. That is the word of God. If you should believe in this path. You will become an inheritor in this church. We were once strangers and foreigners and beyond this inheritance. Nextly not coming and going to church. You will become an inheritor of this house of prayer. We do not want strangers or well-wishers of this church. According to Isaiah fifty seven thirteen. He that put the trust on me shall possess the land and shall inherit my holy mountain. A child of God should be made an inheritor of this holy mountain and this light and truth brings into this portion. We should not forget God. We should not forget the holy mountain of the church. Some of them at situations depart from God. As Isaiah sixty five verse eleven. Some of them are forgetting the holy mountain and departing from God. As some of them are leaving the garden of the church you should not leave. If you be in the holy mountain. If the light and truth will bring lead you and bring you to the holy mountain make you an inheritor of this holy mountain. To Rehemia thirty one twenty three. It is in this holy mountain that the Lord will bless you. And you you also will become a holy mountain after coming to this church. This light and truth is making you a holy person. The Lord bless the inhabitation of justice and mountain of holiness. The first work with this light and truth is doing is leading you and becoming and joining into church. It is firstly bringing you into the holy hill. Nextly where it takes you to. You bring me to the holy hill. And take me to the tabernacle. He will bring you firstly into the church and then take you to the inhabitation. What is that habitation? What is that heaven? According to John fourteen two. In my father's house are many mansions. If it were not so I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you. And if I go and prepare a place for you I will come again and receive you unto myself where I am there in the air. To your beloved taking to the tabernacles is showing the terms of the kingdom of God. It is keeping all these things in mind that David sang the song. See how much is in this one word? He saying. Send out their light and their truth the Lord. Let them lead me. Let them bring me to the holy hill first. And secondly take me to the tabernacles. Verse four he says then will I go into the altar of God and unto God my exceeding charge. Well Jesus said that there are many habitations in my. And there's a great mansion prepared for us. Psalm hundred and thirty two. The Lord that chosen Zion to be his habitation. Because I have decided I will dwell here. And this is my habitation forever. Zion and Jerusalem are his habitations and this truth will lead us to that place. Psalm eighty four verse one how beautiful are their tabernacles of God. How amiable are their tabernacles of a lot of hosts. More than all the habitations of Jacob the Lord this desires of the habitation of Zion. When the light and truth are on you, they will lead you. When you walk in the light to fit then it will bring you to the holy hill which is Zion and Jerusalem. How many of you decide to go to the tabernacles of God? Lord send thy light. Send thy truth Lord. Even at those meeting you send it to me. Let them lead me Lord. No other person should lead me. Let that light and truth lead me. How many of you like to decide this? There are many failures by spirits which are leading you. You have walked in yourself and many failures have come. In your self-knowledge you have gone under your many failures. Going through the words of many of them you have gone through many failures. Today close your eyes kneel down and say God who led David in the light and truth in those days and let him perfectly lead that today lead on me. And in the Old Testament you can read this. Only for two of them they were confirmed in the others. Only for two of them. And David and Daniel was confirmed of heaven. For the rest of them they were running with a shortage that they will get. Not to say that they are. But the Lord can firmly said that I will establish a house for you. And David says Lord you have promised me from afar that you will build me a sure house and I do not want anything more than this and anything in this world. Secondly Daniel says. You go until the end and rest. And I will raise you at the end. And you will receive your inheritance. What you have shown that percentage will I give you. Both of them have finished their race in the hole. You send the light. How many of you going to pray like this? Let's close the eyes kneel down and pray. Lord send the light. Let's all close our eyes. Let's humble ourselves in the presence of God. Lord send the light. How many of you need this light? You're hearing this message but you know the darkness which is in your soul and how we are lamenting the Lord is hearing. In the path of darkness send the light. The Lord of struggle of sin. The struggle of sin is more in me. The struggles of flesh are increasing in me. I don't know how I'll be delivered. I know this truth is purging the sins and delivering me of my sins if it is true send thy truth. Let them lead me Lord. He the two have walked my own accord and walked according to it and many of them I have been confounded. How many of you say like this? Lord I have walked and walked and walked in darkness itself. Lord please send the light. Send thy truth Lord. Hereafter let them lead me. Let them lead me hereafter. Let them take me to the holy hill. And let them lead me to the tabernacles. How many of you desire? All those who desire if you repeat this word it's sufficient. There's no need for you to utter a great prayer are you kneeling down? There's no need for a long prayer. You utter this word like David. What should you say? Lord send thy light and truth. Let them lead me. And to the holy hill. And let them bring me to that tabernacle. Then will I come and enter you? I will enter into my God with exceeding charge. You keep repeating this prayer and the spirit of God will descend upon you that it might lead you. The light which you had thus far asked will come upon you. The power and life of that truth will come and descend upon you. By the lights of the Lord he will lead you hereafter. In this sinful world you will live for the Lord. Lord you lead me. All open your mouth and say Lord let the light lead me and let the truth lead me.
Nishla. Wallamigilil akappattu. Ni mulki kondukkarade. Kattar kankarar. Nadiyae mayarchi galanaitum. Veenai poiut. Or nerkamana sulnali lakappattu than. Indriki kattadhe sani dhanathikni vandurukkaraai. Ni kattarin nambinabidinal. Avdi naamathene ni viswasiitabidinal. Indriki onakkay or karate kattar neetukkara. Edo or vedatill onakkor othase kedaikum. Ni mulki kondukkarase sulnali venndu kattar oni veliakonduvarai. Avar kattalai kodukkara. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Bhaiyappadaade. Devan dekara oni kaga neetapattukkaraade. Inde sulnali ladi pathikkar. Na marabidiyin solukkaraen. Edavodu or reedil devan oni thukivida meetchedtrukkara. Adu onakkupuriyade. Anavicheyemai ni mulki pogam maatai. Edhivaiduva ni mulki pogam maatai. Kattar oni thukke eduka parathil vendu kattalai koduthuvatar. Daiyumaire. Amen. Oni thukke edupadu maatharamala. Kanmalayil oni adikala or urvi pottukkara. He is looking for you. Hikarabakkathidhabaniya. Amen. You are sitting in the forest. God is looking for you. Amen. You are sitting in the forest. You are sitting in the forest. Now he is a son. He is a son. Now he said. My son, you are not a man. I will die if I don't die. I will die if I am sitting in the forest. Amen. You are looking for him. I will die if I don't die. Amen. I will die if I am sitting in the forest. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, amen. Amen. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Hallelujah. All of you. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Neesar ummogam kandu, naan yendrum kalippe. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Enne suve, enjivan nerallo. Enne suve, enbelan nerallo. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Siyo ni talayil velicham nerallo. Nitharum pogantan neendum kalippe. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Do you know what God said? Light and truth. Both are God. He said, you are doing it. Today, you are looking for God. Your children, your children, your family, your children. All of you. You are looking for God. You are looking for me. 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 Hallelujah. You are looking for God. Hallelujah. Amen. Amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Dear people. Today, a person came to God. God is looking for you. Why? God is looking for you. Don't worry. You are not afraid. This is God's story. God is a friend. Who am I afraid of? Who am I afraid of? Who am I afraid of? Do you know? God's light, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's life, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's light, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's life, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's light, a friend. Who am I afraid of? Don't worry. You are looking for him. God's life, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's light, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's life, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's light, a friend. Who am I afraid of? Amen. God's life, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's light, a friend. Who am I afraid of? God's life, a friend. Who am I afraid of? Hallelujah. Amen. Amen. Hallelujah. You are looking for him. Hallelujah. God is looking for you. God is looking for you. You are looking for me, your family, your children. You are looking for God. Amen. Are we going to pray? Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Today, we are going to pray. We are going to pray. We are going to pray. We are going to pray.